Hello everyone and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I am Coach Ashley, joined today by founders Greg and Amanda. Jessica and Colin are here as well from the team. Hello fam, how are you guys doing today?
Doing awesome.
Awesome.
We're sorry, we're a couple of minutes late. We kind of got caught up talking about distracting young babies from their cries. Musicians in the house talking about drumming and singing in harmony with baby cries. Just a little bit of behind the scenes for us here today. Hope you guys are doing well wherever you are in the world. Today, actually, I feel like this kind of fits in. We're going to talk about blogging. We're going to talk about content creation and how this thing, whether it's a little familiar to you or will be by the time we're done today, how this thing can help you to better relate in this personal way, like what we were just talking about here, so that people are interested in learning more from you. And then, of course, these are leads for your Young Living business. So as you are coming in, go ahead and say hello. Let's get some chat happening here. Excited to chat with you guys and show you some training today. I'm going to be, I see a couple of folks who are actually here who are going to have their websites reviewed. Super exciting. We're going to do that at the close of the call. We're going to do some training here. And then we have got you guys a really, really exciting thing to share with you. For those of you who are either making, have made, or want to make a custom website homepage with Get Oiling, we're going to talk about some exciting updates to that on our call today as well. So I'm going to get into these slides and forget to turn off my video once again. It's like a running joke. All right, team, if we could all do the same to get the video quality here for the replay, thanks. All right, so today we are going to talk about blogging for Young Living. So if you came here today and you have questions, if you need help with something, the purpose of these sessions is not only for us to give you training and talk about random things like we just told you about in the open. It is also for us to work live with you. If you've got something that you're struggling with, we want to help you break through so that you can get on to the business of growing your business with Young Living using Get Oiling. So go ahead and add those questions that you have to the Q and A, and we will get to those at the close of our training and our demo here today. So in today's training, we're going to talk about why you should be blogging for Young Living, what you should write about in your blog posts, how to get leads for your Young Living business from your blogs, and then, oh, this is exciting. We have a way for you to display, auto-populate your latest blog post on your Get Oiling homepage. So if you're blogging, you've just got another way to point people who wind up on your homepage toward the content you're creating. We're going to show you that at the close of this training. Now, if you watch this as a recording, you want to get on to this call in future sessions, get reminders, get replays, get downloads of the slides like you'll be getting today. Be sure you are signed up, getoiling.com/weeklyworksession. This is a free training weekly for anyone who is looking to grow with Young Living, whether you are with us yet or not. All right, so maybe just a quick show of hands. If you're here right now, do you use your Get Oiling blog? How many of you are blogging right now? All right, we've got a good number of you guys. So leave us a comment. Let me know how frequently. Is it once a week? Is it every now and then? Is it daily? Is it twice a month? What does that look like for you? All right, now, this may look familiar to those of you who are dedicated to tuning in on a regular basis. Maybe if we could lower those hands, who saw this training? Does this ring a bell? This is a very recent training that we did. And you guys, if you have not seen this, you gotta watch this training. We will put the link in the description of the replay. This is a really important training that I think is really going to kind of live at the center of training strategy that we provide to you on an ongoing basis, because it's just really important for you to understand where everything sits in relation to the other. And your blog content, while it is one of the first things that you may visibly see when someone arrives at your website, it's not the thing that you focus on first. So it's important for you to understand that there is a thing you formulate at the middle of your strategy that then informs the things that layer on top of it. The analogy here with a jawbreaker being you see this beautiful modeled rainbow colored enticing thing on the outside, and as a kid, you want to get down to the middle of it, right? You want that. But if you don't have the stuff in the middle of that jawbreaker and you pick up that pretty rainbow globe, it falls apart in your hands, right? If you don't have the structure beneath it. So it is important that if you have not seen this training yet, that you do make sure that you get up to speed on this so that you've got a really clear picture and you're confident on what goes where. This actually builds upon that training. All right, so on the outside of this circle, this is the stuff that people see first, right? So for the people that you want to reach, the people you want in your Young Living business, your blog is actually the beginning of a breadcrumb trail that leads to working with you and joining Young Living, right? There are a number of different breadcrumb trails that you can have. Your blog is one of the most important ones you can invest time into. What your blog does is it establishes credibility, relevance, relationship, and context between you and your audience without you being there. Now, if they love what they see, what they love what they read, they love what you have to say, and they find you to be credible, they will take you up on a freebie and enter your funnel, where they then become a qualified lead, someone who is perfect for you to follow up with, to have a conversation with, and with whom to share Young Living, right? Now, you need a lot of leads to be able to reach those Young Living growth goals, right? Everything in this business relies on you having an ever-growing massive warm market. This is just one powerful way for you to create that phenomenon for yourself. So when you blog, you're creating that opportunity for residual compounding leads over an indefinite amount of time. You love residual income, right? So why not work to get residual leads so that six months down the road, just like with Young Living, six months down the road, you might still get paid for the work you do today. What if six months down the road, the work you did this week had people effortlessly, if I could get my words out for you, showing up in volume, interested in how they can work with you? If you could spend a couple of hours a week for the next six months so that next year you have an endless line of interested people coming to you, ready to learn more and sign up, would you work those couple of hours a week? Quick show of hands, does that make sense? You want to create residual results, just like you want to create that residual income in your business. And guys, blogging is one of the only real paths to get that residual flow without having to be on a hamster wheel of engagement on social media or worse, on the hamster wheel of running Facebook ads and draining your budget, which ultimately, that's not something I recommend you guys do for Young Living. But anyway, so why don't more people do this? You know, I'm sharing with you how powerful and important this is and what it can do for you. Why aren't more people actually doing it? So we're going to get real here for a second. The first reason why most distributors who know about blogging or not blogging is that it takes work to get it right. This isn't a, you know, I made a post and now they're coming, right? That's, it's not how this works. It takes time to get it right. It takes dedication to get it right. But just like it takes time and dedication for you to learn how to share more effectively so that you can get more Young Living members, this is a worthwhile skill that will help you to get more leads who can become those members, right? And the second reason is because most of us are easily fooled by the vanity metrics of social media, right? So we can look around us and see that there is a gold member who can post something on Facebook and get hundreds of likes and thousands of comments. And so we assume that that means that they are easily signing up new members when they make those posts. Vanity metrics don't tell us what's going on on the dashboard in the VO, right? Perceived popularity does not equal an abundance of new members. Guys, let's be real, how many of you can easily, quickly say, comfortably say that over 50% of your social media friends are fellow Young Living distributors? That's most of us, right? A lot of us have tons and tons of fellow distributors in our social networks. And that's great, right? It's your enriching your lives by being connected to other people who are on the same mission and who support each other and who are Team YL. But we have to be able to put ourselves out there so that we can become popular and credible and followed by people who are not yet members, right? So this is a worthwhile thing to pursue. The only proven path to getting new members consistently, you guys, is to continually grow a massive warm market who finds you credible, right? So what does it take to be credible? You can say that you know what you're talking about, and maybe you do, you probably do. And at the same time, you're going to be limited to who will listen to you right now, right? Like you can show up an expert on a social media post, right? And whoever happens to be scrolling by might pay attention, might not, and that's the end of it. And you have to keep repeating this cycle. We have to keep showing up and saying, hey, I know what I'm talking about. Hey, I can help. Hey, I can help. Hey, I can help. And you're limited to whoever is there who happens to be distractible, who will pay attention right now, right? But your body of work can speak for itself if you're published, and that's what you do with a blog. Your body of work can speak for itself, and the people who want to know what you know can find you on their own, can come to know you as the authority that you are and the things that you're passionate about, and the hours and hours and hours of research that you have devoted to know what you know so you can help, who you know you can help. People can find you if you publish. And people can, when they see you, go and check you out and confirm that you're credible, right? And then you have the ability to get those leads, right? These are people who would not have known you otherwise, or maybe people who would have just scrolled right past. They can go and get the proof, right? So what do you write about? What do you actually write about when you write a blog? First and foremost, you're going to help someone to solve a problem that relates to the center of your strategy. And again, you're going to want to reference that previous training. It'll be linked in the replay, the description box on YouTube, and we'll send it out to you guys who are here live in the email. So you're going to help someone solve a problem that relates to the center of your solution. And basically, all that is, is really just your unique way of oiling your life that you're helping someone like you use to their benefit. A thing that helps you to not just show up and talk about Young Living, because you are not a walking Young Living billboard. You are a unique someone with a unique set of circumstances and a unique approach that can uniquely benefit someone who's out there looking for that help right now. So you show up and you help someone solve a problem that relates to the center of your strategy. You focus on what's important to them. Importantly, your blogs are really not intended for promotion. What blog is, is content, right? Blog and video content is intended to be of service, right? It's intended to help someone understand something better, get a different or better result for themselves, or to be entertained or informed on whatever the topic is that you most want to show up talking about. So your blog is not really the best platform for you to, let's just say, put your PV promos, right? Your promotional material for your members. That's something that's best fit for, say, like a newsletter, right? Where you can send that out, or you can put that inside of a page in a Get Oiling vault so your members can go and reference that and you can point them to that. Your blog is where people who are not in the Young Living universe that you're in can find relevance in what you have to say and what your message is so that they become open to joining and being a part of your Young Living member group, right? You also want to think about what they're Googling, like literally sit down and think, like what are they, what are they logging on and asking Google for help with, right? So what kind of videos are they looking for? Tutorials? What kind of information are they looking for? What kinds of things are they researching? And guys, quick trick, think back to you six months, six years, however long ago it was that you started making a significant shift in your lifestyle that led you to where you are today. What were the problems that you were trying to solve? What were you looking up? Write things about it. You know stuff about this. You've been there. You've been where they are right now, and you can help them. You can use lists and how-tos. You can give recipes, lots of options here. And another great tip is to pay attention to who they are already following for inspiration. Get, what in copywriting is known as a swipe file, which literally just means you have a file on your device, on your computer, wherever, where you take screenshots, you copy email subject lines, blog post titles, and you sift through those, a collection of those that you build over time, reading others who do good work that inspire you, and you get inspired by what they've done. So you have ideas always of what kind of things you can write about. All right, now, how will you get leads when you actually start blogging? So in your blog, you're going to use a call to action. And what this is, is really just a, here's what you do next, right? Because they're taking in information, you know they're there for a purpose. So here's what they can do next to increase their benefit of taking in that information. So one of the first things you can do is offer a landing page to subscribe to the blog. And all this would mean is creating a landing page and then having a tag on that be blog newsletter list or something like that, so that every time you publish a new blog post, you email that out to those subscribers. You could offer a lead magnet that'll help them get a bigger result, right? So if you're blogging about homeschooling, right? And you, maybe you wrote a blog about, you know, how to pick the best homeschool group or something like that, then maybe you've got, you know, a quick video or a guide that teaches them your sort of three-part method to get the kids sitting down and focused for an afternoon, right? And that's something that you offer on the other side of a landing page to get those people who are interested in what you're already sharing to engage deeper, to move further in to the inside of that circle. You could also give them a call to action to reach out to you directly. And on your Get Oiling pages and on your blogs, you can use the link with the hashtag contact for the URL that will actually create a pop-up on the screen. So they'll have a form that just pops up. You don't need to go to another page at all. It'll give your email address, the phone number that you've provided, and they can put their information in and reach out to you directly. And then finally, you could also offer a link to your lead group, right? This could be to a vault or to Facebook. So if, you know, somebody reads an article and you say, hey, if you want to join a whole community of people who are interested in this kind of thing, head over here, right? All of these are ways for you to get leads. And what a lead is, is someone who has opted in, somebody who has said, okay, I see what you're doing. I see what you're saying. I want to learn more, right? All right, so let's go over a couple of quick questions. We'll obviously take more at the close of this and at the end of this call, but there are some primary ones that come up, right? So first, can I mention Young Living in my blog posts or in my content? The short answer is yes, but, right? You want to create curiosity. You don't want people to land on your website and see that once they opt in to get email from you or they speak to you one-on-one, they can already tell, excuse me, that there is some likelihood that they might be sold something and that they might know what it is already. They're not going to be interested enough to take next steps, right? This doesn't mean that you leave Young Living out of your content entirely. Some of the most successful bloggers in Young Living actually do talk about Young Living, but they do it in such a way that it is kind of sprinkled in the content. It's not promotional. They're giving a recipe for a soap or a laundry detergent, a DIY, something like that. And they'll say, this is what I use. And then maybe they'll link off to a separate article that talks more in-depth about why specifically they choose Young Living, and then goes through some frequently asked questions and gives them a link to join or to reach out to them, right? That's totally a viable thing to do. Again, I just shared with you a strategy of some of the most successful bloggers in Young Living. So you can mention Young Living. You just want to make sure that the absolute bulk of what you're putting out there is something that is in service of something they want first, because they're not coming to your blog to learn about Young Living. They could go to Young Living's blog to learn about Young Living. They're coming to your blog because you have the recipe for that thing they're looking for, because you have the how-to, the experience, the knowledge around the thing that they're interested in. And you build trust that way, and you make the recommendation for Young Living. And of course, when the trust is built, they're that much more likely to say yes, right? Another question, what if I don't have a funnel? Totally okay, start blogging. The time to have started blogging was 90 days ago, six months ago. This is something that actually takes some time to start producing organic leads to you for people to find you on the web just by searching for things. It takes time, so start writing now. You can always go back and add links to funnels to your previous blog posts. You can point off to your lead groups, and you can always use that hashtag contact. Just pop up your contact information so people can reach out to you directly. All right, now, what if you only have one funnel? Let's just say, for instance, you are, maybe you're blogging about gardening and green living, and you have one funnel where you're talking about, you know, starting a chicken coop or something like that, you know? And maybe you want to write an article about planting tulips, but maybe not everybody that wants to plant tulips wants chicken coop, right? There's, it's okay. I would always err on the side of including and finding a way to include a lead magnet, because from any piece of content you create, you have the opportunity to grab someone's contact information, which means that the next time you produce content, you can show up and send them a message and say, hey, remember me? You like that thing I did once? Here's another thing I did, come check it out, right? And you can't do that with visitors who don't opt in. So find a way to transition and make relevant and contextualize whatever funnel that you currently have or in the absence of one. Or if you just absolutely feel like it's not congruent enough, then just use that hashtag contact or point them over to a lead group. Whatever you do, make sure that you've got a call to action and that you are creating content. You can always, always go back and edit your calls to action and add in funnels that are more relevant to the content in the future. All right, now, what about SEO? For those of you who don't know what that means, it's totally okay. What it is, is search engine optimization. Basically, what this is, is using words effectively to help people find you when they Google for stuff, right? So if somebody searches in a search engine, how to... They want, you want them to be able to find you, right? So there's a whole world of training around this. And we don't actually train on SEO here at Get Oiling. The best practices are very easy to find and quite universal. So really, any free training that you find is going to be helpful to you. Most of this is going to center around things like keyword research as well as, you know, literally using the long-term keyword. So how to...actually being the title of your blog post, for instance. So don't allow this to be a huge thing for you. Understand that this is something that you will improve over time. You getting out there and creating content now and building the muscle and the strategy of your own so that you can become a better writer, a better copywriter, is what you want to be doing as you continue to learn how to improve, just like anything else that's worthwhile. All right, and then finally, how can I get more people to see my blog posts? For those of you who have been blogging and you're wondering when this is going to do something for you, or if you just want to make sure that right now people have the opportunity to see what you just wrote about, here's what we do to create momentum with your content, to get people seeing your blog posts sooner. The first thing that I recommend is getting into video. So what you want to do is create short YouTube videos that relate to the blog post content. So this can be very brief. And actually, I think it often should be quite brief unless you really want to get into video production as a strategy. It doesn't have to be complicated. Really, what video does is it shortens the amount of time that it takes for someone to really get a feel for who you are and whether or not you're someone that they want to keep following, right? So create those short YouTube videos that relate to your content and then embed that video on your blog post. So now you've got greater interactivity. People stay on your post longer, which is good for SEO. And you're going to basically double-dip in terms of your ability to get new visitors. So you're going to link that blog post in the YouTube description, right? So the blog post you're going to connect it to is also your, one that you're going to link to on YouTube. And then what you do is you take your content, take your blog post, and you share it on social media. And then you can also display your most recent blog posts on your homepage with Get Oiling. So for instance, maybe you are marketing on Instagram and you're using our Linktree-style custom page that you can use to send people to wherever you want them to go from a single link in your profile on Instagram. You can have these recent blog posts show up on that homepage and so that people, when people go to your link, they have the ability to scroll through, you know, opt-in, and then also they can start perusing that published work of yours right away and see things that are relevant to them right away so that they're able to see that you're credible, see that you're someone that they want to continue hearing from. So I want to take this over to Greg, who's going to show you what this looks like and how to use it. We're going to get into some Q and A and site reviews after that. And if you want a review of your work, make sure you head over to getoiling.com/websitereview to get on the list so we can review some of your work on an upcoming call.
Awesome. Let's see here, start my video. Oh, can you make me host? There we go. All right, let me share my screen. So Colin has graciously allowed me to use his back office since there's some, they've got a ton of blogs there, so I'll be showing that today. So the few cool features, let me start with one. If you haven't seen them, whenever you're creating a new page, and actually, let me start at the total beginning of how to get to a new page. If you want to create a new page on your website, that's under the My Site menu under Settings. So click on Settings, and then click on Custom Pages. And then we'll take you to the page, the spot on your site where you can create pages on your website. When you create a page in the bottom, recently, we added some templates. And I just wanted to point out that there is a new one called Photo Home. If you haven't seen that one, that one might be another nice one to play around with here. But as you can see, there's some, you know, it's a photography-oriented homepage that might be useful for you. So, but that wasn't the main star of the show today. I just wanted to sneak that in there. If I come back here, I did set up a page called Blog Post Test to show you what this is all about. Now, every time you're adding a new section to the page builder now, so let's hit Add. If you scroll to the bottom, there's three new sections, and it's three different formats of recent blog posts that will show up in line on the page. This was really cool. We've had this feature requested a lot. People want to have a homepage that has also their dynamically updates whenever they've created a new blog post. So this will actually do that for you now. So if you choose one of these, and I'm going to demo a page that has all three of them just to show you what they look like, but in reality, you'd probably only pick one on whatever page that you're wanting. You can either do this three-column layout here, a two-column layout, or a three-row layout. And if you're really creative, you can get in and edit that as well. You could probably invent a four-row one, or maybe find to do two rows. You could just delete stuff for copy and paste. But, and of course, if you have any other suggestions for those, send them our way. We'll see what we can do there. But, so what I've done now on this specific page here in Colin's back office is we've got, I did add all three. So this top section here, this recent blog post at the top is a three-column layout, and below that is a two-column layout. And there's also the three-row layout on the bottom. As you can see, there's tags that sort of do the work for you. If you're familiar with the other tags throughout the system, this uses the same concept. So this is what it looks like in the editor. But if I come over to what this actually looks like when you view it, you'll see something completely different. So it plugs in, you know, not only the branded menu and everything that they had, that they already have there. Of course, I haven't customized this sub-headline. So, you know, there's probably something better to put there than just that. But you can see it pulls their three most recent blog posts. This is the three-column section here. All these are clickable. You know, it does its best to line them up. It works best if you have featured images that are the width of, or the size of the Facebook sharing, which I think, I don't remember what that was offhand, something like 1200 by 630, if you want to get into that. But I think that's what they've got set up here. Below here is what the two most recent blog posts look like, if you want to see that. So the picture's slightly bigger. They're all still linked to the posts. And then down here on the bottom is what this looks like with the three most recent posts. Now, the way this works, there is an excerpt feature. It'll display the excerpt inside the blog post if you have it. Otherwise, it will actually display the full post. And these posts here, they're actually showing the whole post. So that's why it's so long, but you can actually trim it down a little. But I set one up on a demo account here, over here. So this is a, you know, a Jane demo account that we've got. This has an excerpt. If you have one, it does have the Read More link on the bottom that will take you to whatever, you know, the full blog post. If you're not familiar with where excerpts are created, let me pop back over here into the, into the blog posts. Let me manage those quick, and I'll just pop into this one here. The most recent one that's showing up here. If you scroll down, there is, under Advanced Options, there is a place to put an excerpt. And if you put an excerpt there, that will show that reduced portion, you know, basically sort of an intro or a teaser for that blog post that you can put in there. Maybe align it with the photo size you've got so it lines up nice. You know, this one maybe spills down a little bit more than a person wants to, whatever. But, but those are all, you know, things you can tweak because it is the page builder. You can go in there and change the font size and a lot of those things there. So, but yeah, so that's really exciting new addition. I know we've had a lot of those requests. So, yeah, I think if anyone has any questions or anything, let me know. Somebody said I'm not, I'm going too fast. So if you want me to cover something again quick, by all means, but, but yeah. When you're, basically, when you're editing the page, if you add a section, there's those three new sections in there. It should be set up to just sort of plug and play. Like I said, you can, you can always go in and edit, hover over them and change the font and all that as well to match whatever you're doing. So hopefully, this will be useful for you, and I think it looks awesome.
Excellent, yeah. This, so guys, there have been a couple of questions I want to touch on here since we just went over this. For those of you who are asking questions in the chat... For those of you who, who are asking questions in the chat, please make sure that you put them over in the Q and A so we can get to them because the chat tends to lose questions or availability to see them. There was a question about, you know, whether this was a page itself. What Greg is showing you is actually a section, a page section. So this is something that could go on your homepage. If you created a lead magnet using a custom page and you wanted to point them off toward your additional content, you could have this on that kind of page. You could put this at the bottom of a page in a vault if you have a lead vault. So there's any number of different ways for you to, to plug this in. But it's not, it's not a page itself unless you want it to be, which is kind of what Greg is showing you right now. Awesome. All right. So what I'd like to do, since we did have two people reserve time today for a website review, I want to go ahead and go over those and then get into all this Q and A that we've got over here. So if you don't mind, gonna take screen share back over. If I can actually, hold on just a second. I will do that as soon as my browser cooperates.
Yeah, and I saw a comment come in about how to actually create a blog post. I can cover that quick. Under Blog Posts, click on Write. It'll take you right to the place where you can put in your title and your post and your featured image. And then you can just publish it on the bottom. Once you've done that, you can go under Manage here. Whoops, I am not sharing my screen. I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. Click on Write. Here's your title, post, featured image. Put those in there. That's, you know, the bulk of the work with blogging is, you know, coming up with the content, obviously. Once you have some posts, go under Manage and they'll be here. You can click on them, you can share them, you can view them. So that's the super high level. There's, there's a bit more training in our searchable help library down here. If you want to check that out and read up on that, but.
Yep, just click that little question mark and type in blog. All right, let's see. I have today, Kanika. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly. We're going to have you out first and then Debbie. So let me bring you out. All right.
Hi.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Great. All right, I'm trying to get around my microphone here so I could open up your site and share this with everybody. Tell us a little bit about your site and what you, what kind of feedback you'd like.
Um, so my site is basically based around productivity and just, you know, when you're working from home, everything kind of gets in your way. So it was really based around that and getting started in your business. So what I kind of want to know is, I guess, like, how do I get more people to my site? I've just started blogging and I tried to link, you know, my blogs on my homepage. And I've tried to do a couple of things, but that's, I just basically want to make sure it's hitting all the points, basically, and how I can get more people there.
Yeah, excellent. Well, first, first of all, great job. Really, really, really great job. I love what you've done with the homepage in particular, that the navigation here is really easy. You've got your sort of prime real estate taken up right here in a very smart way that brings people over to a really nice looking landing page. So I would, let's see, so what are you offering here? Is this, is this a newsletter?
Yes.
Okay, so I would definitely encourage you to include very specifically the word newsletter. So you're setting clear expectations. This will get you more conversions of leads on this page.
Okay.
And since that is the one that's, that's featured right here upfront, you definitely want to make sure that you've got that optimized. And in terms of, you know, of getting more people to your sites, tell me, let's see, so productivity, are you selling courses?
No, it's just like a bundle that I created. And it's just basically how, it's things that I've given my team to help them stay focused on their work. And it's just like a productivity bundle. It's like a digital download on Etsy.
Okay, okay, excellent. So some of the things that you can do, you know, once, so now you basically have everything in place, right? Like you're creating content, you've got lead magnets up. What kind of public-facing live content are you doing? Like, are you doing things on Facebook? Like, have you been?
Haven't been anything live.
Okay, okay. So I think it would be really beneficial if that's something that you're comfortable with. There are a couple of other options too. I definitely start, start with YouTube channel if you aren't doing that yet. And because that's, having a YouTube that connects to your blog is really one of the easiest, most powerful ways to get more visitors to your blog. And I think I'd seen a comment about, you know, alternatives to YouTube and uncertainty about where YouTube is going. Guys, I haven't heard anything about, you know, anything happening to YouTube. They're owned by Google. So when somebody Googles something, if you have an answer to that on video, it's going to have an even higher likelihood of showing up higher in the search engine. If it, if it, you know, meets enough of that SEO criteria, it's actually, it can be a lot easier to rank on YouTube for more competitive keywords than it is on blog posts just because of the nature of people really wanting to take in visual content and have things told to them instead of having to read through and navigate through a bunch of reading. It feels like less work in the brain. And so people now, they are attracted to that. So that's the first recommendation I would make is to actually get, get a YouTube channel going. And then, and where I would start is just with the content that you already have on your blogs. Come up with, with, you know, corresponding content for YouTube so that you're able to link that blog post in the YouTube description box. And then embed the, the video on your blogs themselves. The other thing that you can do beyond that is to identify other, I call them competitors. You could also call them colleagues, but these are basically people who are, who you are competing with for the attention of your ideal person. Right? So, so think about who they're following now. They don't have to and ideally shouldn't even offer something exactly the same as what you offer. But, but there are other people who are serving that audience right now who would benefit from offering something of more diverse value. You know, you guys can co-op on something together. You know, there's, I mean, a great example, you know, like what we have done with Martha, which I believe is probably maybe how you found us. I know that you've, you've been in, in several of those courses. So, you know, we're, we're two entities that have an overlap in who we serve. And so one reaches out to the other, hey, I think we could do something really cool together. Would you be open to this or that? And it could start with something as simple as you inviting them to guest post on your blog. And then, of course, you know, that reciprocation potentially and likely happening there for you to, you know, gain an audience from them. You can, you know, you can, again, create and co-promote something together. This is, you know, the same type of person you might have to come and speak as an expert in your lead or specialty groups. If you're running those on social media. So start thinking about sort of partnerships with people who are, who are already kind of taking up space in the minds of your ideal clients. And, and that'll, that'll, that's a really quick way to, to create long-lasting referrals. And those tend to convert really well as, as well. Like if you are getting your audience directly from someone else, you know, who's vouching for you, it does a lot for you.
Okay.
Yeah. And I mean, you're, you're perfectly positioned for this right now. I mean, I think now it's really just a matter of staying consistent, continually pushing that content out there and then seeking out those opportunities for you to show up and be the expert. So I would consider getting into maybe longer-form expert content on your YouTube channel, for instance. And then, you know, seeing if there are ways that you can help and contribute to others who have, again, existing audience bases. Maybe there's coaches or experts in, you know, adjacent fields. And you can show up and say, hey, I've got a training on how, you know, they can get XYZ. I'd love to offer this for free just as a way to, you know, to pay it forward and, you know, of course, to grow my audience. And there's so many people out there who would be very open to doing that with you.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. Anything else? You've done an excellent job here. Again, I'm really impressed.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I will say, and I couldn't get over to this because I have this productivity software that keeps me from going to distracting websites. So it couldn't take me over to the Etsy page. That's an interesting thing to, to have in place potentially. You know, because, well, I don't know if people like search for productivity on Etsy, but you do have, that is like another platform where there is traffic. Like you can SEO your listings on Etsy, for instance. But, but just so you know, if you wanted to kind of keep it all in one place, you can do one-off sales on custom pages and Get Oiling, which Greg trained on a bit back. So if you wanted to list those on your Good Oiling site where you don't have to send them off to another place, then you could do that through us as well.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, this is great. Awesome. So any other questions for you?
No, that's great information. Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Keep up the great work. I'm really impressed with what you're doing here.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. Now, if I could open this up again, we're going to meet with Debbie. Are you here, Debbie? Can you raise your hand for me, please? All right, there you are. How are you?
Good.
How are you? Doing great. Excited to chat with you. Tell me about what you are looking to get some feedback on today.
Oh dear. Actually, my whole site is just a conglomeration of confusion.
Okay. So it's going straight to your blog. All right. Okay.
I don't, I just can't quite figure out how to do the hashtag links. I've got a landing page, but I was thinking I wanted to change it. And now I can't figure out how to do that. Um, I've got two. I set them up as vaults because it's just too little, like ebook recipe books that I had thought I was going to charge for them. But they have 12 recipes in them. So now I'm thinking maybe that needs to be a giveaway instead of something I charge for. I'm just.
Okay.
I want you to just tell me what to do.
Okay. All right. So first things first, I want you to make sure that, that at least for now, this is your homepage. Because this is, this has, we do want to make sure that these link up properly because they're not currently linking.
Right. I can't figure out how to do that.
Well, actually, I mean, what you could do, let's see. Have you? So there's About Me. Okay. This is great. Okay, so, so what I would encourage you to do is build a homepage that, you know, up at the top offers something. And yes, I think if it's, if it's 12 recipes, I think that that is a great giveaway. Can you charge for it? Yes, but if you consider that your greater aim here is to try to get more people on your list, then I would err on the side of giving away to get more leads for now. In the future, that is definitely something that you could consider selling. And guys, this goes with anything that you offer. If you're, if you're launching a course for the first time, having something, making it a no-brainer early so that you can get a lot of people in, so that you have those leads to work with and you build momentum is a really good idea, right? Unless you already have a gigantic list. If you already have a gigantic list, then charge what you think it's worth right out of the gate. But that's not where most of us get started, right?
Right.
The chicken or the egg starts with offering something of high value that makes it really easy for people to, to see that you are worth them getting to know and work with. I love what you put here. If I'm in trouble. You're southern.
Definitely.
Where are you from?
Oklahoma.
Okay. You hear my first middle name, you know you're in trouble. I'm from Alabama originally, so I know this. That might not even just be a southern thing. I'm sure there's somebody else chiming in like, no, no, we do this in the Midwest too. All right. So, so tell me, tell me about, I mean, I love, I love that you're blogging. These are, these are great. I love that you've got these pictures here. Tell me about the person that you are trying to attract.
Um. She is someone who maybe didn't know her grandma and wants to learn things like her grandma did. Old-fashioned cooking, canning, food preservation. I went through a period of time where my husband was off work. And if I hadn't had my ranching background and knew that I had to have food put up because winter's coming and you can't get to town for two weeks, we would have starved. So, you know, it's a lot of that.
Okay, okay. After my heart. Okay. So what I want to recommend, just, just as a first bit here, this is a great font to use in, like, sort of accent places. But where it takes up a lot of space, and this is fine, actually, kind of where it is. But like over, over here, for instance, you don't necessarily want to have it, you know, as the primary font all over one page. It's, 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 this isn't really particularly problematic because it is quite legible. But potentially, you know, we're thinking ahead to the big, big audience that you want. Someone didn't grow up reading cursive English. This might be difficult. It might read as difficult. And when people experience something on a webpage that they're not familiar with or emotionally invested in, that feels like work to them, they, they tend to click off the page and not pay attention when they really could get a lot from it. So, so I would err on the side of being a little more plain in terms of the font that you use, where you really want people to be reading, where you're kind of given a splash where it's design-focused, have scripty cursive fonts, but otherwise it's really, really better to err on the side of, of plainer fonts. Okay, so what I would encourage you to do, tell me what kind of, what kind of training have, have you invested in, if any, around sort of your, your strategy online?
And it's mostly just life skills.
Okay, no, no, I'm talking about like, are, have you done any courses with our partners or have you?
Oh, I see. I'm in the Martha's HBR program.
Okay.
Um, just, yeah, I'm in SMS and Go For Gold, HBR. You know, but I just, I'm new. I haven't got through everything yet.
Well, you know what? I can't tell. You're doing an excellent job. So there's that. So what I would encourage you to do in Go For Gold, and, and listen, I, we contributed to HBR. We love the content that's in there. If you have not completed Go For Gold from start to finish, highly recommend that you just put your blinders on and do that. Because it is going to walk you through all of those things that you need to know in the order you need to know them to set up your Good Oiling site. And then what I would encourage you to do is in that last module of Go For Gold, where you get the template for a homepage and you learn how to set it up and design your menu and all this kind of stuff, that you, you set that up. And then what I want you to do is go and go to the Pioneer Woman's website, right? Or go to, you know, think about some other people who are along those lines, who are established, you know, sort of authority figures in the, you know, in the similar space. They're doing recipes. They're talking about canning. They're condensing grandma wisdom.
Bone setting.
Yeah, yes, absolutely. So find a couple of those and be inspired by the flow of what they present. And then use that inspiration to modify that page template that you've got in Go For Gold in that last module. Then you can kind of tie everything together in that way. And what you have on that, on that template is the ability to link off to everything that you want to, right? To have your funnel that you make and Go For Gold right up there at the top to, you know, to link your blog, you know, your lead group, whatever else that you create. But, but I would, I would seek inspiration, yeah, from, from folks who are established and building a following and email list and such online in a big way. I mean, Ree came to mind for me. I know that this isn't like a one-for-one, but, but her branding is really nice and it very much evokes, I feel, kind of some of the same aesthetic that, that you may be moving in the direction of, if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay, good. So I would keep up the good work on your blogs. Keep doing that. Let's see, you're offering this inside of a vault right now. You're offering this inside of a vault right now. Um, hmm. I think that as an, if we're going to call it an ebook, it's probably best to just make it into a PDF format. And, and just out of functionality strategically here, because it's an ebook, you want them to be able to say, print it out and use it while they're cooking. And so having that in like a course format might be a little more difficult. Now, if you are, let's just say, you know, you've got short videos that are teaching things, putting that into an online class, that's a whole other story. That's actually, you know, if, if you're going to make videos for your recipes, then this is a really great thing to put together in that way. So on each page of the lesson, you've got a video of you for the recipe. You've got maybe a PDF download for that individual page of the recipe. And then people can share comments and tweaks or whatever, you know, beneath the video and that lesson content, right? But if right now it's just an ebook, which is perfectly fine, and it looks like you've already got that branded up pretty, and it looks like it may, I think those look like Young Living oils, they're vitality oils. You may very well use this as a great lead magnet to get people curious about Young Living. So if you're out there sharing for free, here's my 12 recipes and you can use them in thousands of different recipes because they're salts, right? Um, you know, I'm going to show you healthy salts, you know? Um, that's, I think that's something that would get a lot of people curious and could actually convert more leads for you. So, and those leads will be more worth more to you in the long run if they get curious and become members than in any $10 sale from them ever would be, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. Excellent. So great job. Please keep us posted on the work that you're doing and definitely do move ahead with Go For Gold and, and use the inspiration from other people that are blogging like you are with recipes and this kind of wisdom to, you know, to kind of guide your, your creative movements in that direction. And feel free, you know, sign up for another one of these again. Come back here. We're here for you every week.
Perfect.
Awesome.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, is there a, like a list someplace that has, you know, when you're trying to link a button and you're supposed to have the hashtag sign and then a word?
Hmm, so there's two of those.
Find those words.
So I, I, that's a good question. I don't think that we have them out there listed as words because it's really just two. And, and one of them will only work on one kind of page, right? Anywhere on your entire Get Oil Link site, if it's on in the about section, if it's on a blog post, if it's on a page like this, if you use the hashtag contact and make sure you don't tell it to open in a new window, it will pop up a contact form. That just, it'll have the, the photo that you uploaded of yourself, the email address and phone number that you've provided, and it'll give them a field, an opportunity to fill out information. So this would be like if we went over to this. This is what Contact Me does. Okay, so it's what the hashtag contact does. And then on custom pages. So this is a custom page. You built this as a custom page. You have, I believe, contact here as well. Oh, actually, no, you have a mail too. Cool. Um, so that's not what we're trying to do. So if, if you put in the button link for this hashtag contact, that'll pull up that button. Now, if you wanted to offer that, that PDF recipe book, for instance, as a, as a lead magnet, then what you would do on this page is you would have hashtag lead. And then in your page settings, you just make sure that you set that up so that you have a pop-up form for your landing page, right? So if I go to, let me show you what that looks like. Let's see. Hmm. Let me see if I can remember. Here we go. All right. So on this page, we've got a button right here. The code on this button is hashtag lead. And if we go into the page, the settings on the page under lead settings, we put this in the field and then we choose what we want to have here. And then on the next page, of course, you know, they'll be able to get whatever they came for, right? And we have, this, this is taught in, in Go For Gold, by the way. Like, how to do this is going to be in that last, that last module of Go For Gold.
Perfect.
Awesome. Hope that helps.
So much.
Of course, of course. Great to have you on. Okay. Thank you to both of our amazing folks who shared today their websites. You guys, make sure you go to getoilink.com/websitereview so you can get your own review. We're going to use our remaining section here for Q and A. Make sure that you've put your questions in the Q and A box so we don't miss them in the chat. All right. Jen asks, what are the technical elements and steps to set up a blog subscription? Do you need a landing page or is there a lead form on blogs? Right now, you're going to use a landing page for this. So either a custom page or a, or an actual landing page from the contacts menu. So what you want to do here is just keep it really straightforward. Actually, on one of our previous trainings, I believe the title of it on YouTube is how to train your members in under an hour a month, or member education in under an hour a month. We actually have a newsletter funnel that's pre-made for you that you can get and download into your account. That training is specifically about your members, but you can use the same format to gear it toward leads and just call it blog updates. And just make sure that you've got the tag on your landing page, whether that's a lead form on a custom page or on a landing page itself. Make sure that you have specified blog updates or newsletter or something like that so that you know who those people are. And those are the people that you can continue to syndicate your new content out to as you make it. But you will have to make that separate piece there for now. All right. Allison says, I struggle with blog content. I have no idea what to write about that people would be interested in. When I blogged years ago, it was about my family and before it was my story or struggle with endometriosis. But I have no idea if anyone ever read it. How do I figure out what to write about? Well, there are ways to figure out who's reading and you can definitely, or you know, how many people are reading. You can see those metrics in Get Oil Link in your dashboard. So figuring out what's to write about really begins with figuring out what's in the center of that circle. So highly encourage you, if you haven't seen it yet, to watch that previous training that I mentioned, the Jawbreaker analogy training, where you can really kind of start to get clear on, on what your unique context is. I mean, at the end of the day, blogging about your family and about your struggles, if it's done in such a way that it helps someone like you to get a result that they're looking for, that's totally the right thing to blog about. Like that's, that's the perfect thing to blog about. Now, of course, where we're using words like endometriosis, you do have to be mindful of whatever content that you're putting out there and, you know, any hot words that you may be using. So you do want to make sure that if you're going to be talking about a specific condition, that you are, that you're keeping compliance. And this is another reason why it's so important to not make your blog and your public facing content something that is a huge Young Living, you know, road sign, right? You want people to actually show up, hear what you have to say, trust you first. And when you are engaging in that kind of content, value-forward marketing, you're not going to come upon compliance issues as readily because you're not out there trying to say, endometriosis plus Young Living product equals poof, right? If, if you're doing that, you're very much out of compliance, right? But if you are, if you're talking about your own journey and how things have changed for you and you're not just making it about the products, you're talking about the lifestyle changes, you're talking about the recipes, the mindsets, the tricks, the hacks, the little things that you slaved out in your life to learn that other people haven't figured out yet. The aha's for you. The, it's probably mundane for you right now, the things that you should be blogging about because it's so obvious, but it's magical to that person who hasn't seen that information yet. And wasn't that the case for you? When you started on your journey and you started doing research and you started reading blogs? Everyone here has looked and read at blogs and like found information that they needed to make significant changes in their life. You are doing that for someone else. So do your version. And if you are, and I think you are, a part of Martha Creach's Go For Gold, or if you've done my personal branding intensive, mapping out your content using, using outlines. So this would be map your message is, is what I often call it. This is where you get the seeds for that content. And then of course, subscribe, like I mentioned earlier, to people who are creating content that inspires you and, and from people who you know are taking up the minds and the inboxes of the people you want to be reaching. Get inspired by those people that are already doing great work. All right. Wendy is asking, and this is a Greg, can you show how to change the button color?
Absolutely. Let me start my video here while we're at it. Share my screen. Come back over here. I actually saw that one and so I jumped ahead to this, to this specific screen, but I'll show you how to get there too, because that's, most of the journey is finding where to click in the menu, right? So come down to the my site menu, click on settings here on the left. So my site settings. And this button here will show up if you're on premium or higher, or if you have the basic plan with our fonts analytics and colors add-on. And we can add that on for you. If you email us, there's an extra small fee, but it does allow you to customize your colors and fonts in a way that the other, that you can't without it. So once you click on that button, it takes you to the page where you can actually change your brand colors. And these, these will show throughout your site, including like when you're creating a new, say for example, if you look at these colors that are here, and I'm creating a new blog post, those colors will show up in this palette as well. So you can have your brand color easily accessible with a click by setting them up here. You can also change your fonts, but the original, your original question was, how do you edit the buttons? So there's this lineup of all the possible buttons that are available in the system. And all you have to do is click on the one that you want to edit. There is one called default. I'll call that out here. This is, you know, if nothing else is working for you and changing whatever button color that you're wanting to change, try editing the default one. But once you click on it, you can change the color. The easiest thing to do is just to change the background color. Choose a different one and it'll update it for you. You know, find a new color. You can change the text color too, to go with it. You know, these are not the best color choices I'm choosing right now, but choose one that matches your, your branding. And there's some additional options here too. You can actually get into border width, button corners, like if you want a square button, you can do that. If you want a totally round button, you can do that. You can go somewhere in the middle and it'll, it'll just kind of adjust it based on the look and feel that you want. And then say you want to modify this. I want to put a black border on the, on the top for some reason. Let's do that. And so it'll, you know, it'll, it'll grow that button color. So you can really make these unique too. So beyond just the color, the easiest way is to change the background color works most of the time. But if you want to customize it and make it a little more like you, you certainly can play around with it and make something that looks really cool.
That is a very unique button.
Yeah. Indeed.
Awesome. Great questions, you guys. Allison was looking for some clarification there. So is that under site settings? She doesn't see anything under custom pages. Oh, so this is, this is actually changing colors on your buttons like site-wide? Or what if you want to change like a but, like, like a button on a, on a page? Is there a way to do that?
Uh, these will, you know, by changing them here, that changes your available buttons. So I guess if you have another, if you're in the page editor and you have a blue button and you want a green button, you have to delete the blue button and add a green button. There's no way to like, just click on it and change the color right now. But if you don't like the colors that come or the style, you can totally change those under there. And if you don't have this button down here, that's something we can add on to the basic plan. But it's only on premium and higher by default.
Yeah, that's an important thing to note again, I think for you guys who, who maybe don't know this, if you're new with us, or you're really just kind of getting into customizing and expanding how you can brand yourself on your site. Our, our plans do allow for a lot more branding options at premium and higher. But if you are, let's just say, you know, you're, you're at Silver and maybe you've only got one or two people, or maybe you're executive or whatever, you, you know, you're not quite ready for the big volume at premium or pro. We do have add-ons. So just reach out to our team and we are really happy to help you make this what you needed to be for your business. Excellent. Well, you guys, great training today, great questions, great reviews. Really, really happy to be here for another week of helping you guys out. Kim, glad you were able to join us. If you guys want to come back and say hello on video. Got one more question from Camille here before we go. She says, in the add button for a section page, I believe you can change the button color. Yeah, you could actually choose from a range of button colors and sizes when you hit that little plus mark in a section of a custom page. Yeah. And if you're, if you're brave with like code and stuff, you could also switch into code view and play around with that. But I, I can't tell you what to do or that's concern. That's out of, that is, that is out of my zone of genius. Awesome. Well, you guys, glad we could all be here today. Look forward to working with you guys on another session. Getoilink.com/weeklyworksession to get on the list for these calls. And then of course, getoilink.com/websitereview to get your own site reviewed. No matter where you're at in the process, we're here to help you out and make this work for you. Guys, look forward to seeing you on next week's training. Have a great week.
See everybody.